I may not be as good as you, because you're great. I think I'm just good.
Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Grisby?
Good evening, Board President Johnson, Board members, and Dr. Green. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Jaya Ledbetter. Jaya is a 5th grade Honorable Student at Bates Elementary, where Mr. Stefan Johnson is principal. She is 10 years old. Jaya is the daughter of Ebony McElroy. At Bates, Jaya serves as the president of the Student Government Association. She was recently inducted into the Beta Honors Club at Bates Elementary. Jaya was also one of the students featured in the mad drama JPS Style in the district convocation held in January at the Mississippi Coliseum. Jaya believes that she can succeed anywhere, anytime. She strives hard to make good grades and help others in her classroom. She's very polite and respectful. Jaya attends Greater Antioch Baptist Church in Jackson. In her spare time, she loves to dance, spend time with her friends, and best of all, spend all of her mom's shopping money. Leading us in today's pledge, Jaya Ledbetter.
Great evening.
Great evening.
May you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Do you have, are your parents here with you? We're gonna ask. Thank you. Next, we have our words of encouragement by Ayesha D. Hayes. Ayesha is a proud Jim Hill Tiger, where she is a senior IB scholar. Ayesha started writing poetry at the age of nine. While in 6th grade, one of her teachers was so impressed by her creativity and writing skills that she helped her develop a group called The Prodigy Experience. This group will forever remain legendary, winning first place in their very first competition at Tubaloo College. Ayesha has completed, has competed in several spoken word events, winning monetary gifts, and more. As an accomplished songwriter and poet, she belongs to two groups, The Mind Evaluation Project and My Voice. Her love for the spoken word made her realize that she can touch lives with her voice. Ayesha is a passionate scholar who is changing the game in her community by inspiring her peers.
Good evening, everyone, Board and Dr. Green. Today, I will present you all with a few words of encouragement. This spoken word piece I just recently wrote is called "Appearances." I walked in here with grace and elegance. Nice watch, hair laid, voice loud as the lions, so you can hear me as I focus on the nightmares on Coach Fred Harris Street. Yet only you see my lashes. You can only see what's being displayed. I can repeat myself a million times. It's obvious you only like the Cinderella plays. Tell me, what did you expect of me today? What are your expectations? I have an agenda. I'm up to something. I have a need to save the youth, my youth, our youth, your youth. Are you with me? Thank you.
Ayesha, do you have any family with you?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, all members are present, therefore we have a quorum. We have an opportunity, we've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance for January 21st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
Dr. Sevek has moved, and Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. Greetings, Board members, JPS administrators, our staff, and parents, community members, and attendants, and those watching us live. First, before I get into my written remarks, we have a prepared video presentation from the instructional television production team, and we'll pause for a moment for the video to air.
Congratulations to Callaway High School junior William Holbert. Selected out of approximately 800 applicants statewide, the gifted musician and trombone player has earned a spot to march with the elite Mississippi Lions All-State Band in Honolulu, Hawaii. Holbert will travel with the group this summer to compete at the Lions Club International Convention. He is one of only two JPS students in the last 14 years to be invited to the competition. Holbert, a native of Detroit, Michigan, began playing the trombone in the 7th grade. The Jackson Public School District receives 15 PREPS Value Added Awards. The Program of Research and Evaluation for Public Schools, or PREPS, recently announced the winners for 2020. The PREPS Value Added Analysis uses data from the previous school year's accountability results to determine award recipients. PREPS member schools deemed as adding values are those that perform significantly better than other schools with comparable socioeconomic circumstances. The ACT average test score was used as one of the determining factors in the awards for the first time this year. Winners will be honored at an awards luncheon in March. For more information about the PREPS Value Added Awards, please visit our website. The deadline to apply and enroll your child for JPS special programs is rapidly approaching. All applications must now be completed online and submitted by Saturday, February 15th, 2020. Please visit our website for more information about registration requirements, criteria for enrollment, and required documentation. Our special programs offerings include school-wide arts access in grades kindergarten through 5th grade, Academic and Performing Arts Complex, or APAC, in grades 4 through 12, and the International Baccalaureate Program offered in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. Span Elementary Principal Lori Torrey is the newest member selected to serve on the Administrator Advisory Council. She was named to the position by Lieutenant Governor Delbert Hoesman and will represent the Capital Area Region. The Administrator Advisory Council is designed to provide input for Mississippi's public school educators regarding legislation that impacts our schools. The 19-member advisory council is made up of public school leaders from all nine regions of the state, including superintendents, principals, and education program directors. Torrey holds a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education and a Master of Science in school guidance and counseling from Jackson State University, as well as a specialist degree in educational administration from Delta State University. She has served as an administrator at Span Elementary since 2015. Dr. Eric Green announced the district's parent, teacher, and administrator of the year, along with two additional categories: Education Leader of the Year and Support Employee of the Year at our 2020 Spring Convocation. The honorees are Dawson Principal Vicki Conley, Administrator of the Year; Lanier Teacher Tia Carl, is Teacher of the Year; Span Parent Mark Anthony Davis is our Parent of the Year. And the new categories are Education Leader of the Year, Mr. Anthony Moore, and Support Employee of the Year, Ms. Patricia Ransom. Congratulations to these exemplary members of Team JPS. Thanks for all you do to lead with excellence. All aboard the child nutrition so train! The National School Lunch Week Award Celebration is scheduled for February 12th at 9:00 a.m. in the JPS boardroom. You don't want to miss this wonderful event, so we hope you'll climb aboard and join us next week, because in the famous words of the late, great Don Cornelius, "You can bet your last money it's all gonna be a stone gas, honey." For the latest information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us, and connect with us on Twitter, Facebook, and our YouTube channel.
Board members, our team is striving to provide excellence in all that we do, and so you can see even in our video reel here, that the creative team that we have is really stretching themselves out there. And that voice there, for those who don't know, is our very own Barry White. Dr. Cormac. Thanks again to the team just for continuing to provide us with some engaging highlights there. So many things to celebrate, so much that's already happened since the start, since we started back to school after the winter holiday. I will say just again, a huge kudos to all of our awardees, the administrator, principal, parent, and the support staff member of the year. Just really pleased to have all those, and Teacher of the Year, of course, all those folks doing such wonderful work and engaging with us as well. Just want to shout out again, Mr. William Holbert from Callaway High School. Pretty awesome that he's, he's going to be representing us and representing the state in this all-star band. And anyone who's been to a band competition and has seen some of the best of the best competing and really demonstrating their talents and skills and hard, hard work. How many of us have been in any kind of a marching band? Anybody in here? Am I the only? Okay, there are a few of us. So y'all know, that's hard work. You don't just wake up one day and go and compete and get all fours or top scores. So again, kudos to him. Love that he's playing the trombone, which I played. And love that he's originally from Michigan, which I'm from. So lots of great things there. All right, moving forward. So as we do each year, February, we celebrate African-American Heritage and Black History Month, and this year's national theme is African-Americans and the Vote, given that it's such an important general election year, which is also a landmark year for voting rights. 2020 marks the 150th anniversary of the 15th Amendment, which was passed in 1870, which gave black men the right to vote following the Civil War. And in honor of Black History Month, I'd like to share a brief poem by one of my absolute favorite writers. It's Langston Hughes. It's called "Dreams." Hold fast to dreams, for if dreams die, life is a broken-winged bird that cannot fly. Hold fast to dreams, for when dreams go, life is a barren field frozen with snow. Dreams by Langston Hughes. As you saw in our highlight reel there, we are celebrating our counselors this week, well, you didn't hear this. We were celebrating our counselors this week, February 3rd through the 7th, and as part of the National School Counseling Week. These academic professionals are instrumental in helping our scholars achieve success and plan for their career. We recommend and commend all of our school counselors for the hard work that they do, outstanding work that they do each and every day. JPS counselors are actively engaged in helping our scholars to discover their abilities, their strengths, their interests, their talents, to chart a path for great success in school and in life. We honor them, and I invite you to join us in honoring them right now with a round of applause for all of our counselors. I'm so glad to announce and to name here tonight that we held our first district-wide science fair in the past 10 years, the first in 10 years, last week at Blackburn Middle School. Congratulations to all of our 6th through 8th grade scholars who showcased their talents in the field of science and technology. Projects that they presented ranged from how reducing sugar intake can lower diabetes risk, to those using drones to help clean up the neighborhoods. Students who scored high enough during the district fair will move on to the regional science fair at Jackson State University in March. And those winners at the regional fair will go on to the state fair at Delta State University. A special thanks to all of our curriculum team and all of the teachers and those who coordinated and supported the young people in creating and developing and presenting their projects. Also to our partners at Jackson State University for serving as judges, and of course, to all of the young people for showcasing their skills and to their families, whom I'm sure were up late some nights helping young people with those project boards and with those science fairs. So let's give those young people a round of applause. In Jackson Public Schools, we believe that relationships, joyful learning environments, and making instruction relevant and key elements to scholars, are key elements to scholars wanting to be here at school each and every day. Unfortunately, in a recent attendance audit, it revealed that we have some major challenges around attendance. And for example, we have about 1,900 scholars with more than 10 unexcused absences so far this school year. Parents, we want to encourage you to please be mindful of absences, whether they're excused or unexcused, because we know that missing just one day of instruction can adversely affect our scholars' learning and their, their performance in school. To our principals and teachers and counselors and all of those in the school-based teams, please continue to build the strong relationships that we know matter, to building those with our scholars and with their families, and motivating them to attend school each and every day. We know that with those strong relationships, that our scholars are much more likely to miss school and to be encouraged to come to school each and every day. Even though we have these challenges and we have some, clearly some work to do in ensuring that all of our young people are in school each and every day, we do have some schools, several schools who are demonstrating some progress and some strong work in that area. I'll just congratulate and highlight one of those schools, because it happens to be a secondary school, and that's Chastain Middle School, for having the lowest number of unexcused absences so far this school of all secondary schools. Thank you to Principal Harrison Michael and the entire Chastain team, to the young people and their families for the work that you're doing in ensuring the young folks are in school, learning, and attending to their own path to success. Let's give them another round of applause. So you've already heard from Ms. Hayes, but if you're, if you're not aware, the 2020 Spring Convocation Ceremony, if you weren't there, you missed a treat. You missed an amazing spoken word performance by scholars from across the district in several schools. Ms. Ayesha Hayes, an accomplished writer and IB scholar at Jim Hill High School, was a part of that group. As mentioned earlier in her bio, she's a, she is passionate about her community and has developed a program to give peers a voice. Please join me in welcoming back Ms. Ayesha Hayes as she comes forward to share more about her program, Speak. Ms. Hayes?
Hello again. Um, so, my computer's loading up a little slow. But, um, what admired me to do this program, I was actually in middle school. I was actually in middle school, and I had a vision of starting a program, but I didn't have the support group or really, I guess, the motivation that I have now. And you know, I just kept putting it to the side and was like, you know what? I do one day, you know? It's just, it's just an idea, it's just a dream. But until I got in middle school and I joined the programs that I'm a part of now, which are The Mind Evaluation Project and My Voice, I started to get a different viewpoint and have a different mindset. And so, actually, last year, I was talking to my principal about it, and I, and it was so late when I actually, you know, came up with the idea, you know, actually start a program at the school. So now this year, I'm actually putting it into effect. And so, me and Mr. Brown, the principal at Jim Hill High School, we actually been trying to work towards starting something. And so, we actually been working towards trying to start something, and it's been kind of hard to get a meeting with him, because, because we're both busy, and then with me being an IB and all these, I be testing stuff I have to do, it's just real hard. Okay, all right, here you go. But I do want to share a little bit about my program with you all.
To whom much is given, much is required, Ms. Hayes. All the tests.
Yes, yes, you are exactly right. Okay, I think this one's gonna pop up. Okay, yes. Okay, so, um, why did I start this program? So I started this program because I wanted to make a change in our schools, and not just in our schools, but in the community as a whole. Growing up in probably around my 8th grade, 9th grade year, and honestly, it's very hard topic to talk about, but I seen a lot of pregnant girls, and so that kind of made me get the idea like, okay, who's teaching these young people about sex? Like, we're not learning about anything, like, it's kids in my age, 15 or younger, and they're pregnant. And so, I know it was one girl, I was actually good friends with her, and she was talking about like dropping out of school, because she was 14, she was pregnant, and she was just in the 9th grade, and she was like, I can't, I can't deal with this. And so, I encouraged her as a friend, I'm like, you know what? You shouldn't drop out of school. It's somebody out there who can help you. It's the people who gonna help you, somebody gonna help you. So she just kept thinking about it and thinking about it, and I remember one day, one of the JR OTC teachers was talking to her, and they was just encouraging her of different things she could do, so she wouldn't have to drop out of school. And I remember the next year, I believe, she came back to school, she had delivered her child, and she was back in school. So just by me just talking to her, it had changed her mindset. And so, even that situation, I always go back to that, and I'm like, you know what? That helped somebody. Just me talking to somebody, that helped somebody. Um, also, when I first, when I first wanted to do this program, I wanted to mainly focus on helping young people with their writing and reading skills. Um, a lot of times, we spend less time working with young people on that end. I know a few months back, my principal at my school, Mr. Brown, he was actually reviewing some of the reading scores of the students, and they were very low. And so, I felt like by me being a good writer and by me learning more with my writing, I could share my knowledge with young people. And so, I wanted to provide students with, help with their communication and writing skills. A lot of times, we find ourselves not being able to, I won't say talk properly, but talk correctly. I know a lot of times, even when I'm at school and I'm asking a teacher something, a lot of times, students say, "Can I?" Well, that's not how you ask for something, it's "May I?" And so, just those small little things, you know, we don't really focus on, and just things like that, I wanted to kind of pinpoint and show young people, you know, this is important, and we don't put it out there like it's important, but it is. I also wanted to teach young people life skills, and for as life skills, I mean, just basically, financial stability, being on your own. A lot of times, young people, they're so, they're so spoon-fed, and they don't really understand that, especially seniors, people who are, you know, graduating high school and going to college, they don't understand that when you're out there on your own, you're on your own. And so, I just felt like having somebody my age, especially a youth, it's easier to listen to, you feel like you're not being judged, nobody's pushing you to do anything. And so, that's what this program basically is, is a youth-to-youth program, where a young person, which is myself, will be mentoring to young people on about life skills, mentor stability and physical health. And so, yeah, that's basically it, just teaching them about their physical health, how to take care of their bodies and their minds. And also, with the program, I mean, we do a little of that, we, we mostly focus on sexual reproduction, sexual health, and mental health. And I remember talking with my counselors about starting it, and I've really been getting a lot of good support from the counselors and my principal. So hopefully, before the year is out, we, I can actually, you know, get some things started, because I had students come to me and say, you know what, I like this, it's a good idea, we should really have that at our school. You know, a lot of times, it's very hard for me to talk to the counselor, you know, but I feel like talking to you, it might be a little easier. And so, at the end of my program, in May, I wanted to do a, kind of like a ceremony and host it, you know, just give the students like an award, just for participating and just sharing their stories. And then, I wanted to present them like with an award, and so hopefully, I can still do that, because with the program, I mean, I get stipends. So I wanted to use my stipend money to give back to the students, to show that, you know, you matter and that what you're doing is good. You know, you don't have to be in the streets or, you know, do things that's negative, you can always do something positive and show them that you get rewarded for doing good. So yeah, that's basically what my program will, is about and will be about.
Hayes, before you go, just want to, want to give you a huge, again, a round of applause, but a huge kudos for, one, for continuing to build your own skills and to, to present yourself as the strong young woman that you are, but also, this huge heart, clearly, this huge heart, to impact your peers and your community. It is to be commended. I'm in awe of you and so excited to see where you go next, and so glad to know that you're part of this JPS family. So kudos again to you. As we do each month, Board members and members of the community, we, we'd, we'd like to provide some updates to you regarding our progress with the BON program. We continue our efforts to ensure that all projects are completed with excellence and on schedule. Tonight, we'll have some updates on projects at Forest Hill High School and Obama Magnet Elementary School. Mr. Don McCracken, our Executive Director of Facilities and Operations, will join us now with more information. Mr. McCracken?
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Green, we come to you each month, as Dr. Green mentioned, to give you an update per your request of the BON program. We have 85 slides, that's gonna take quite a while. Just teasing. It's gonna be, it's gonna be right at 24, but we're gonna go through them very quickly.
Everybody's a comedian.
Have to break it up every now and then. The first, the three things that we would like to bring to you today are primarily the MDE cap update, as well as the BON administration team, and also the status of projects. We have been fortunate, in the last presentation, we've cleared two schools, which are ProVine and Wilkins, and looking forward to clearing Van Winkle once the asphalt is poured. MDE was quite pleased of our progress, and they should be out within the next couple to three weeks, once that project is completed, and we then should be able to clear that school. We are still working with due diligence to finish the balance of the schools, but that will come later as some of the larger projects begin to start. The administration, BON administration team consists of yours truly, Mrs. Mrs. Lena Franklin, which is the interim Director of Construction, and she serves as a project manager. I believe you may have met them, met her. Mr. Mike Rickbryd, which we brought on board, uh, two months ago. Uh, he's serving as a project coordinator. Uh, Linda Robinson, which serves as our BON procurement specialist, which works very closely with Mrs. Miller and her team, as well as Mr. Charlie Bonds, uh, with, uh, Internal Audit. And also IMS, which you approved at the last board meeting to assist us with project management or project coordination, as well as scheduling. And also Mrs. Sandra Robinson, which is our interim Chief Operations Officer. She serves as an advisor. She's rolling off that team and now serving as an advisor. Thank you for that. As a segue into that, uh, these are some of the things that IMS has provided to date. Uh, they've been on board maybe about two and a half weeks, and they have been working, uh, very closely with our team, as well as, uh, with the architectural teams. Uh, this is just a sample, sample of a Gantt chart that we will be producing each month, uh, and it will be expanded. And this is just one particular project. It just shows, uh, twenty, so many days that the project, um, the involvement of the project from schematic phase, uh, to completion. And each project will have a Gantt chart. And then we will provide a master, uh, schedule for your, your perusal, uh, once that is in place. Uh, they will continue to work with each architectural firm, uh, to get, uh, confirmed dates so that we can put it all in a Gantt chart. In addition to that, we also have, we al- boy, it's rather sensitive here. Uh, we have our project planning template. And this, again, will provide detailed information on each project. So whenever you choose to wanna have information on any project, you'll be able to, uh, peruse that information. And some of this information will be on the website for other colleagues viewing. The next grouping of information, uh, which are projects that are completed to date. Uh, we've completed forty-three projects to date. Uh, that project, that number will continue to expand. Uh, we were anticipating it being right at, uh, fifty to fifty-six projects. Uh, the weather prevented us from doing some of the exterior work, like exterior lighting, as well as the portico at, uh, Chestane, getting it corrected, and, uh, concrete pavement, uh, and asphalt, uh, resurfacing. So as of now, we've completed forty-three projects. And you have a listing of each project and what it entails. And the next group of projects are the projects that are under construction. Those that are highlighted in the yellow are the ones that have started since the last board meeting, and that will continue to expand until the next meeting. We tried to add at least five to ten, or as, as many as possible, uh, based upon the construction industry, uh, so that we won't over saturate, uh, the, uh, construction industry. So we're trying to time it and also, um, provide as much information to the public as we possibly can. So again, each, at this juncture, we've had right at, uh, thirty-one projects that are under construction. And you can peruse, uh, that information at your leisure. And the next grouping are projects that are scheduled to bid. We bid relatively large projects, uh, last month, and, uh, those projects will be coming to you for approval, uh, and also signature for, for the president so that we can get started on that work. These projects range between five hundred thousand to two point seven million dollars. Uh, again, these are projects that are scheduled, uh, for Phase Two, and we're moving, um, directly into Phase Two. And the last portion may be a little shocker, but it's reality. And this is the drive, the circular drive going into Johns Hopkins. Fortunately, we have, uh, entered into a resolution with Heinz County, and they have agreed to move forward with this project. Although it's included in the BON program, that will also be a savings, that we can u- utilize those funds, uh, paving, uh, to do paving elsewhere on that site. So they're poised and ready to begin. We're just waiting for the weather to break, uh, so that we can minimize this type of environment, uh, as well as approach to, uh, to the school. Another area that, uh, is rather shocking, uh, this is at Chestane. And this is right at the portico, and also where students, uh, used to go out to the tennis court. This work will begin this month, and we anticipate, anticipate getting it corrected, uh, hopefully prior to the next board meeting. But we wanted to show you the befores, and we will show you the afters once, uh, those fountains are complete. And hope that we can get a smile versus, oh my God, a look on your face.
Just to, just to underscore, this, this exit has been, is not being utilized.
And it is, um, protected so that students and, uh, people within the facility will not exit.
Right.
That concludes my presentation. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I'm hearing about Johns Hopkins.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Also, just to, again, to underscore, um, Mr. McCracken shared a few of the tools, the project plan and the Gantt chart, and I believe there was perhaps some other things that are being utilized. Um, that's part of the work with, uh, IMS and supporting us in organizing our projects, making sure that we remain on schedule. So more than just kinda the details in there. I know the print is kinda small. I wanted to share with you a sample of some of the tools being used to help us to move the, the projects along. So, um, just based on what I've heard from the team and, and the engagement thus far, we're, we're already, they've already hit the ground running to kinda push us and support us along the way. Um, and as I'm understanding these, um, the, the budgets that we're getting now, that we're working up now, put us in, in, uh, place to be able to bid and get some bids back that we can use.
That's correct. Yes.
Yes. Alright.
Okay.
One, one, uh, quick point. Again, great information, Mr. McCracken. Uh, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, I think. Um, just really encourage you to put this great information up on our website.
Yes.
Can we get a commitment for when we can get this up on the website?
Alright.
So midnight, by midnight tomorrow, it will be on the website.
Again, part of it is, there's been a lot of work accomplished. And, you know, when you start looking at the sheer number of projects, it's a great story to tell. And, um, just wanna help us, help ourselves by telling the story and, and making it available. So, thank you.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And board members, that concludes my, uh, remarks and reports this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green and Mr. McCracken. Um, next we have public participation.
Board members, you do have someone who signed up to address you this evening. It's a parent. Um, because I think it involves both a student and a personnel matter, I've spoken and asked that, um, the board consider hearing from this parent in executive session. She's agreed to that, and so I would just ask, once you finish your open session portion of the meeting, if you would consider an executive session to handle this.
Are there any objections, board members? Thank you, Attorney Turner. And we have no discipline cases? No discipline cases? Next, we have information items only. Ms. Kwan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To President Johnson and the JPS Board, and to Dr. Green and the executive team, I am honored to tell you a little bit about our collaboration with the Partnership for a Healthy Mississippi. This is our fourth year as a recipient of the School Health Technical Assistant Project. More details are in the attached letter, I believe, that you have received. As a recipient of the project, we have received technical assistance, which allowed our school health council to meet and create a plan which focuses on a coordinated school wellness plan. We have received training for our school health council. The training helped to identify our own strengths and weaknesses based on the components of the whole school, whole community and whole child model. We also have developed an action plan to be completed this school year, which includes continuing to host an asthma education event for students and staff, to develop a wellness walking plan for our staff. We haven't done much walking recently, but we're gonna get back to it. To collaborate with other agencies such as Food Corps, the Mississippi State Extension Service, Mississippi Food Network, and Alcorn State 4H Program. We are receiving funding, which has allowed us to purchase additional PE equipment, such as balls, jump ropes, and hula hoops. Hula hoops don't last very long. And to demonstrate how involved the Partnership for a Healthy Mississippi has been, our school health coordinator is here. I want her to come up. Ms. DeAngelique Lister. I called her, I emailed her today, and she said, I'll be there. So this is how involved they are. I don't know if she has anything.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is DeAngelique Lister. I work for the Partnership for a Healthy Mississippi. Um, I served as school health coordinator for the Jackson area and has worked with over forty schools within the Jackson area, provided technical assistance. Um, so basically, we provide health and wellness initiatives for our schools. We even provided them with, um, funding opportunities as well. Um, so Oak Forest, Pecan Park are just a portion of what you all will receive on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I do. Ms. Kwan, Principal Kwan. Who serves on your school health council?
Okay, we have, we have some students, and we have, uh, classified, certified staff. We have community members, the adopters. There is a set list of individuals that we are expected to have on our wellness council. And we've been able to fill those, cause we also have a clergy. We have a retired educator. We have Mrs. Nolan on there. So we have individuals that have a vested interest in the school and know something about the school.
Now, is this something that other schools could do? Do you have to apply for it, or you're chosen for it, or how does that work?
Ms.
Oh, Ms. Lister.
Ms. Lister can answer that. Cause we've done it for four years, and we have received money each year and been able to purchase PE equipment, and that is helping. Of course, every year when she comes back, we say, we're on board. We're on board.
So basically, how the process works is I reach out to the schools and state that, uh, we have this project that's actually funded by the WK Kellogg Foundation. And so basically, um, we provide them with the state mandate, which is the Mississippi Healthy Students Act, that's required all schools in the state of Mississippi are supposed to have a school health council. With that being said, I come in, provide technical assistance, provide them with a list of members from, as Ms. Kwan stated, with the principals, counselors, community members, um, even a parent, and possibly a student could be a part of this as well. And so they come up with, um, action plans based off of their two lowest scoring, um, weaknesses. And that's per the school health index, and that's provided by CDC.
So other schools are expected to?
Yes. Other schools are expected to participate. Um, that's how I reach out to them, just stating it's mandated, so there are, mhm.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Right, to be clear, Dr. Hairston, uh, all schools in Mississippi are required to have, they're mandated to have a school health council. The support through the partnership helps them to do what they're required to do.
Correct.
Right, they're not mandated to engage with the partnership, but why wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Right, there's an opportunity there to, um, um, increase your knowledge and to get some funding.
Correct. And we have great success, um, with it as well. Like I stated, we have had, we've worked with over forty, well, I've worked with over forty schools, um, in the Jackson area, as well as work with early childcare centers. And we're not just only focusing Jackson, we're focusing South Florida County, East Biloxi as well, to provide the same opportunity.
What I love, um, and so appreciate you being here, um, tonight to speak on behalf of the partnership. What I love here is that our team and, and our partners are, uh, seeing this as an opportunity to really make a change and a difference in the school community around health. Um, and we know, we talked earlier about, uh, attendance and absenteeism. And we know that some portion of that has to do with, uh, health issues, um, in the home or with the student, and, and we sometimes even have health issues amongst our staff members. So, uh, more than a compliance issue, I love that folks are really taking this on and looking for ways, uh, to increase awareness around health, uh, and healthy living. As a, as a shameless plug, and, um, just, uh, as an announcement to folks, Pecan Park and the Bar, the Pecan Park and Bar Elementary communities will host a fair, um, an open house in, in, uh, April. And there will be a huge, um, health and wellness, uh, component there. So just one of the many things happening throughout the district as folks really own this opportunity to, um, increase our healthy living.
Yeah, I wish there would be a way we could somehow tease out some of those factors that are improving by participation in a program like this. You mentioned absenteeism, and there's so many ways that our children and staff benefit by being healthy.
Right.
And we do have, um, evaluations, pre and post-test as well, to gather the data of improvement. Uh, we also hosted a district-wide conference that had all of these schools that participated in our project as well. And so they gather all information from social, emotional health, to, um, physical activity, to parent engagement. Those things were all addressed as well. So really just focus on the whole child, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there a parent component?
Yes, so basically with parent engagement, um, we focus on that as well. We go and present before PTA, uh, PTO. We also have hosted some other, um, initiatives as well with parents.
How many engagements does the partnership have with, uh, Jackson Public Schools? I, I think I've seen some others come through as well.
Yes, other schools?
Yes.
Yes, so, um, like I stated, it's over forty schools.
All in the city of Jackson?
All in the city of Jackson.
Oh, I thought those were region-wise. Okay, that's great.
Yes, all in the city of Jackson. Yes, correct. And then like I stated, we do have other target areas, which were East Biloxi and South Florida County.
Thank you.
So how many of our schools are participating? Forty?
Yes, over forty, mhm. And I can provide the list as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, ladies. Ms. Fleckett?
Great afternoon, Dr. Green. Dr. Johnson, President, Board, of the Board, and other distinguished members. I do think Ms. Kwan did share a lot, but I will just add, uh, we are proud, this is my counselor, to stand before you tonight to present a quick overview and a few highlights of Oak Forest Elementary partnership with Healthy Mississippi for the last two years. As you know, this project is run by WK Kellogg. Over the last two years, we have received a monetary donation of five hundred dollars and two hundred and fifty dollars. We have also purchased some of the same items as Ms. Kwan mentioned earlier. But in addition, we did water bottles last year. Uh, we did it for our third through fifth grade students, because according to research, when a student receives water, it stimulates the brain. So each student did receive a free water bottle. Together, we have established a school health council and identified our areas of weakness, which are health education, Module Two, and physical education and physical activities, Module Three. From our areas of weakness, we created action plans, which were, we incorporated- we incorporated Go Noodle and Move to Learn. We will hold a school-wide health fair to be held in May. And as you mentioned, Dr. Hairston, we are looking at partnering with Marshall Elementary for that school-wide health plan. And we are too, Ms. Kwan, trying to do those wellness walks and find a way to incorporate them. We also hosted, host the partnership Just Have a Ball, and we had a ball for our third through fifth grade students. And each student received a ball for home. We close by saying, we appreciate the time and effort given by all of our school board members and Dr. Green in order to constantly improve our school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Fluckett. Now, we have the consent agenda items finance. All of the consent agenda items finance have been reviewed by the Board. Previously, we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items finance?
So moved.
Thank you. Dr. Fluckett has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. Again, all of the consent agenda items that have been reviewed by the Board previously, we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions, board members?
Madam President, I do have a question. And I know it's been discussed, but could Dr. Cormac point out on the calendar where our inclement days are?
Dr. Cormac?
Inclement weather days? So that our parents would know that that if something happens, this is the day that you're going to school?
Yes, so, those will be noted on the website. However, each of the days where students have been marked for a holiday, for instance, the President's Day holiday, are holidays that can be subsumed and that are marked and listed so that we can make those up and without disrupting the school calendar. Ms. Williams is going to provide a copy of the calendar, and I can indicate them.
I think Easter Monday was one of them.
Easter Monday is another of the days. We have those as well that are listed. But there are a list of six total dates that we've identified in the event of inclement weather so that they can make those adjustments as needed.
Okay, that's very helpful because the parent and me having flashbacks.
Absolutely. And, you know, given prior history, we want to be really clear about indicating those on the front end because they often do happen, and we want to make certain that we're able to make those up without having to extend the school year or to envision other kinds of disruptive makeup days.
We have to remind our parents of that over and over and over again, that yes, it's a holiday, but if we need inclement weather, it won't be a holiday anymore.
Yes, ma'am. And they're mixed both in the first and second semester so that those, so we can have some adjustments built into the, into the spring calendar, should they happen in the fall.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, board members, any other questions? So, we're back to the consent agenda items general. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items general?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Seveka has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, board members, we have the consent agenda items personnel. Again, we've had an opportunity to review this. Are there any questions, board members? If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Hairston has moved, and Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the consent agenda items personnel has been approved. So, board members, we do have a consideration to hold an executive session. Is there a motion to close the meeting so that we can go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Hairston and seconded by Mr. Figures. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the session is closed so that we can consider going into executive session.